Six o'clock on Tuesday, October 20th, 2020, I will call this meeting of the Miami Township, Montgomery County Board of Trustees to order. If everybody could please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Morris?
Here.
Mr. Culp?
Here.
Mr. Posey?
Yeah.
Please to see that we have no military casualties, the first responder casualties.
What do you mean? I'd like to read the following list of first responder casualties for the period of October 7th through October 20th, 2020. Firefighter or paramedic Jason Ortiz, San Francisco Fire Department, California, end of watch October 7th, 2020. Detective Kurt Holland, Commerce City Police Department, Colorado, end of watch October 16th, 2020. Major Ricky A. Groves, Kennet Police Department, Missouri, end of watch October 16th, 2020. Investigator Lemuel Del Rey Bruce, Houston Fire Marshal's Office, Texas, end of watch October 16th, 2020, and Sergeant Harry Cohen, Riverside County Sheriff's Department, California, end of watch October 18th, 2020.
Thank you, Chief, but everybody please join me in a moment of silence. Thank you. We have no guests or presentations according to my agenda. I will make a motion to approve the consent agenda. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion?
Mr. Morris?
Hi.
Mr. Culp?
Hi.
Mr. Posey?
Hi.
We have a good deal of new business. Mr. Hess and Chief Stegelmeyer, you have items A and B.
Thank you, Mr. Morris. I guess I'll start with this. On Resolution 70, 2020, that's authorized the township administrator to enter into agreement with the city of Kettering. That would be for dispatch services or public safety dispatching. Last meeting Sheriff Streck, Captain Wheeler, and Mr. Small talked about the regional dispatch center. And I first and foremost want to start out with, we have an outstanding relationship with Sheriff Streck and his staff. I have the most upstanding respect for Sheriff Stack, sorry, Sheriff Steck and his staff. Rob and I got to know each other back in 2008 when I was a cabinet of Miami's Burn, and Miami's Burn was moving to the RDC, and we did that move in 90 days. Sheriff Streck noted in the comments last meeting that several things that, you know, he and I have asked for several years that made comments this funding model didn't work, that some changes need to be made. He also mentioned that in the last two years, there have been basically a new management in the Sheriff's Department and at the county. I just want to touch base with a couple of things prior to this change last couple of years. And when I mentioned the county, I'm not talking about the Sheriff's Department. It's more of the administration in overseeing the regional dispatch center. When they've, the regional dispatch center first started, the building was leased. Now with the new administrator that came in, Michael, he, the county ended up buying the building, but that is after it was sold and our lease payments at the time were quite high. And I think we could have bought that building for what we put in the lease money. And when I talk about we, it's the multiple jurisdictions that use the regional dispatch center. There's 14 police agencies, there's 10 fire departments. Now, some of those overlap. I think there's a total, maybe 11 to 12 different entities that use the regional dispatch center. We talked about, since I came here in 2013, we talked about needing that different model. We talked about increasing sales tax. We talked about increasing phone tax, and none of those have come through. The county did do an increase in the sales tax several years ago. We asked during a meeting with the former administrator, you know, what that brought in, but his comment was, no, that's going to the regional dispatch center. Sure, excuse me, Sheriff Streck. So the Sheriff's Department puts in $2.3 million, but the really county doesn't put a lot in such as they do with the regional crime lab. They supplement some of that. Recently, there's talk about what has been done in the last, let's say, the last two years. Just this year, the, they've reduced the reserve, I believe, from 22 or 23% to 17%, and there'll be a rebate in the first quarter of next year to some of the agencies. There's been a request that the county use cares money to pay the salaries of the dispatchers, again, to lower the cost to the agencies, and that's still out there being considered or not considered. There's still been no answer on that. In talking about Captain Wheeler, you know, he talked about how, how the dispatch center works. And, you know, they take a million phone calls a year. They take over 500 or do 500,000 police calls out, 75,000 firing EMS, and they do it with a staff of pretty much, at a times, nine dispatchers and three to eight call takers. And they do, there's a lot of calls coming in for that staff. And they, they serve in these communities roughly about 315,000 people. Kettering, on the other hand, their population is about 56,000. They take in about 89,000 phone calls a year, and they do it with three dispatchers per shift, and about 20% of the time, they have a fourth one. And our cost for this contract, and there's the memo that goes along with this resolution, our first year cost will be $300,000. Now Sheriff Streck mentioned that in 2013, or 2013, before we, I'm sorry, before we went to the regional dispatch center, our cost for Miami Township's dispatch center, PSAP, was over $400,000. So the first year I came to Miami Township in 2013, our costs were $276,000. Sheriff Streck mentioned that next year, our cost will be $391,000. By 2025, it's estimated that our cost will be $479,000. And as I said, our first year cost with Kettering is $300,000. We have been looking for ways to save money at the township ever since I got here. One of the first things I did was to cost savings. I had always, when I was in Miami's Burn 34 years, I always belonged to the regional, or the Miami Valley Regional Crime Lab. But the cost of it got too expensive for us. So to save the money, we went to BCI and the State Patrol Crime Lab to save funds. This is a cost savings measure for Miami Township and Charlie's budget. What our anticipated date to move would be, as if this gets approved, would be January 1st, 2022, and our costs are estimated to be $410,000 to the regional dispatch center, or our cost in this contract is $300,000 to Kettering. So there's a savings of $410,000. Chief, is there anything that I may have missed in this, this contract?
No, sir. You covered it quite inclusively. And I think the numbers pretty much speak for itself. One of the reasons, again, and I'm going to reiterate exactly what you said, we have an excellent rapport with Sheriff's Office. We work hand in hand with Washington Township, as well as having members on task force and being on the board of the task force for the county. This is strictly a business move for the fact that, you know, being steward of township tax funds, I think it's imperative that we be as fiscally responsible as we can. And it's, the 100,000 would actually, in shortcomings, especially with pandemic years, would help the police department as well, as well as operating costs in years to come. So I think you summed it all, Minister.
In conjunction with that is Resolution 71, which is authorize the township administrator into agreement with Motorola Solutions for a different RMS. And I'll turn this over to Chief Stegelmeyer.
Thank you, sir. Again, this is kind of the piggyback part of Resolution 70, 2020. And if we do choose to elect to go to Kettering Dispatch, they have a different computer dispatching software, as well as a record management system. Allowing this contract, or if this was approved, it'll allow us to go into the same CAD and RMS software that Kettering's going to be using here for. And that would allow us to integrate with their system. Not just to mention that, but there's a couple of things I'd like to point out to trustees, if you don't mind. Along with this upgrade, Spelman actually negotiated a good package rate force with the software that'll included several upgrades of front force, which would be beneficial to the police department. For example, one of the modules that we're going to be obtaining, if we go with Spelman, would be a cost stat management portion of this software. What that's going to allow us to do, it is allows myself and the Assistant Chief, we use a lot of data for intelligent led policing strategies here in the township. This component allows us to pull real time crime stats and use that data to deploy our personnel, as well as other policing styles in real time, so we can address problems as they come. That's something we don't have right now. Another portion that we're going to get this, with this new software, is a fleet management component. And even though our road garage has some minor component to that, this new module will allow us to monitor things in real time again, such as vehicle maintenance costs, gas mileage on the cruisers, any other incidentals that can allow me to prolong the life of my fleet. Again, in effort to save our capital expenses and taxpayer money. One of the final things that I would like to point out to you is, the new software is also, it has a component of, in, in the county is upgrading theirs as well, is the AVL software, which is Automatic Vehicle Locator. We're going to be able to have real time on our officers' vehicles that all, a component of be able to track our officer's vehicles. Now, while some might look at this and say, it's us trying to keep eye on the officers, that's not true. We're not going to use it for that. What it will allow my supervisors doing the field is to pull up a screen at any point in time and see where the manpower is deployed, and we can pull people accordingly to cover shifts and shortages within the township. So we have a lot more components that are going to be offered to us with this upgrade, Spelman, if we choose or allow to be upgraded to it. And it's just something, again, that is a piggyback part of, if we do get to a new dispatcher, it's software that we will have to upgrade in order to accomplish that. I'm going to answer your questions.
One thing I wanted to note also in, in the Resolution 70, that Kettering's in the middle of a $11 million renovation of their building, which also includes their dispatch center. So they'll have all new equipment in there. So that is Resolution 70 and 71. So if anybody has any questions that either the chief or I can answer.
Yeah, I have a question. Is the Motorola upgrade still usable before we transition to Kettering?
The ones I just pointed out to you, like the CAT, the Armist, for like the real time crime stats, we will not build access without going to this new RMS. No, sir.
Mr. Morris, I think your mic is muted.
I tried to switch over to my phone. Give me a second. All right, am I back?
You're back.
All right, I've got an unstable connection, so I tried to connect via phone, and that wasn't working. So we'll go back to the old computer, hope it stays steady. Mr. Hess, you have Resolution 72.
Number 72 is just a housekeeping measure. It's a resolution to concur with the city commission, City of Dayton's commission, or Commissioner's recommendation to have Mike Cross do a second term as representative for the Miami Township-Daten Joint Economic Development District. And our contract states that, that we shall concur with the appointment, and I am making a recommendation that we do concur with Mr. Cross being part of the Dayton Judd.
Excellent. Any questions on item 73, 72, I mean? All right, Mr. McCord, you have items 73 through 77, all relating to tax evaluations on the fire department.
Yes. Good evening, Board. The resolutions I have for you tonight are the first step, the certification step in the ultimate decision on what to do with the expiring fire levy at the end of 2021. The window is now open for, for the township to put on the ballot, either a renewal or replacement levy for that funding that we then use, we use those funds to provide our portion of the cost of the Miami Valley Fire District. And so I included some background in a memo within the reading package, just to kind of clarify where we've been. These are the 2008 and the 2011 levies that have been renewed in five year segments over the years in anticipation of a levy for the entire MVFD district. That doesn't look likely at this point, at least I, we haven't been informed of that. So I'm bringing this forth tonight, just as a, that first step. It doesn't put anything on the ballot. It simply is the first step to ask the county auditor to provide us back with the revenue projections that each of those millage rates would do. And there's one in there for renewal of the current 3.65, a replacement then between 3.65 and 4.5, strictly to gain, gather information so that we can help make a better decision toward the replacement, ultimately, the, whatever takes the place of the current levy that'll expire at the end of next year.
Any questions on any of these resolutions? All right, back to Mr. Hess, revised motion. Now you're muted.
Sorry about that. A couple meetings ago, we had a motion to explore funding opportunities for park and safety improvements, and this is a revised, and I'll turn this over to Mr. Morris.
So in listening to the feedback we got on my original motion, clearly, I got feedback from trustees, and I spoke to some other members of the community. I revised motion for consideration. One piece that has been added was a letter of support from the Miami Township Foundation, very much interested in seeing this project and multiple projects move forward, as well as an addition to look at helping fund a study of the low dam, which was expressed as an item that is certain concern, that I think could also fall within this funding model. So the revised motion adds consideration and requests that funding be used to look at a study of the low dam, and is being supported by the Miami Township Foundation. So that is the revision in place.
So I have some questions, and it's still, based on the wording of this is concerning to me, and I'm going to express why, is that it requests the township administrator and the fiscal officer to explore and determine the best way up to 500,000, and then says a portion of the funding shall be specifically allocated to three things. Is this a funding resolution, or is this an exploratory resolution for which a funding resolution would have to come back?
My answer to that question is, is it is a resolution to ask the administrator and the fiscal officer to explore potential funding, which could be used to fund those options. So it is guaranteeing no funding of anything. It is simply saying, there are at our disposal right now, multiple opportunities for the township to consider funding, namely, revised Senate Bill Four, which allows the use of unencumbered TIF funds to be used outside of those TIFs. Looking at our recent report from Mr. McCord, we have roughly $3.3 million in three of our TIFs. I don't know how much of that unencumbered, but that would be part of the study to say, if we don't have future debt obligations, that that money would be set to, it could potentially be repurposed for parks. We have general capital projects and public works capital funds, about $2 million in those funds that could potentially be tapped. But my hope is, is that the township could identify sources outside of general funds, possibly working with the CIC, which received influx of capital from the sale of property at Vienna Parkway, that that money could potentially used, or we could find through working with Miami Township Foundation, some grants, gifts, or corporate support. So it's simply a motion to explore potential funding options that would then be brought back to the, to the trustees for consideration.
Are you willing to be striking the sentence, beginning a portion of the funding to the end, and so that this truly is just an exploration, as opposed to an earmark? I have trouble with what it is, because it both explores funding and then assigns the funding's purpose.
Well, I think those are the, the projects that we also need to consider in the short run because of the potential grant opportunities and discounts. So they were specifically pointed out because they are projects that I think can be done in a unique period of, would like the motion to be considered as written.
So John, I support what you're describing when you talk about it, but I had the same concern as Terry, when it sounds like it's assigning expenditures in this. So there's something we could, there are a few words there we could scratch or change to make it clear that that's not what this is. This is, this is directing the township administration to, you know, look at these funding ideas and bring us back some options. And I don't mind the different projects being listed, but I, I don't think it, we should be assigning any kind of, suggesting that something has actually been approved or assigned some priority and expenditure in this.
Okay, so either of you want to make a proposed amendment to it, change that language?
I don't know if we're in that part of the meeting yet, but this is part of what I, I'm glad we're having the opportunity to discuss.
Well, we can always take a look at it as, and it can always be revised again. So let's move forward with the agenda. Mr. Hinkleman, do we have anybody wishing to come forward with any public comment? If you'd like to make a public comment, please raise your hand.
I see none.
All right. Should that change, we want to make sure we give our residents the opportunity to be engaged. Leave the public comment period open, but we will move forward on the, on the agenda for consideration of resolutions and motions. I will make a motion to approve Resolution 70-2020, a resolution to authorize the Miami Township Administrator to enter into an agreement with the city of Kettering. Therefore, be it resolved, Miami Township Board of Trustees hereby authorizes the township administrator to enter into an agreement with the city of Kettering to provide public safety dispatch services where the police department effective January 1, 2022. Is there a second?
Yeah, I'll second.
Discussion. I would like to thank the chief and Administrator Hess for their due diligence and bringing this opportunity to the residents. I think they investigated many, many options, including staying the current RDC. I also share Administrator Hess's respect for the Montgomery County Sheriff's Department. And I have been impressed with the new leadership in the county and what they are proposing to bring to the RDC. It is my hope in the passing of this, if this resolution were to pass, that we have the opportunity to see what they can accomplish in the next five years. And we have the opportunity to consider coming back. So this, in my mind, is the right move for Miami Township right now, from a fiscal responsibility standpoint. And it gives the Sheriff's Department and the county leadership an opportunity to make changes and investments that can hopefully stabilize their operational costs and potentially lead to lower turnover in the department, which contributes a lot to the overtime costs that tend to drive up. City of Kettering has got very stable employment in their RDC, and I think that is one of the prime reasons why they're able to offer us a lower cost than we're currently seeing with the Sheriff's Department. Any other comments or thoughts?
Yeah, I would, first of all, echo most of what you said there, and I appreciate that the, I want to express my appreciation to the Sheriff's Office, particularly Captain Wheeler, for his efforts in educating me as to how this works and how this went through Chief Stegelmeyer, and helped me facilitate a tour over there to understand why this worked and what it was like. And I, I'm sure all the trustees did their own investigation, but my investigation showed that this is a relatively good apples to apples comparison that Administrator Hess described accurately. This is a cost savings to us for this facilitation without an expected decrease in service, and that the contract proposal has some elements in there to make sure that we're receiving the service. We expect both agencies meet the state criteria for the time in which calls are answered and responded to. And so there's not much in my fear of what this switch would mean from an adverse perspective other than a benefit to taxpayers. But I do want to appreciate everyone's efforts, both within the township and Kettering, and that the RDC in facilitating my investigation.
So this is Don Culp. I'll comment that Article II, the termination article in the agreement, concerns me because it signs Miami Township up to a five year agreement with Kettering, if I understand it correctly. And yet, it gives Kettering a six month out. So that would leave us in a bad spot if Kettering, two years down the road, decides, you know, this multi, multi-entity arrangement isn't working out very well for us. Number two, my experience with Kettering is they have the highest cost structure within their public sector, our communities in Montgomery County, in this area of Montgomery County. And their own residents have brought that to their attention and kind of pushed back on their costs, their cost profile for their public sector employees. So what might be a bargain today or two years ago, two years from now, may not be such a great bargain a couple of years down the road after that. So those are two things that concern me.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Gold called the quote.
Mr. Morris?
Hi.
Mr. Culp?
No.
Mr. Posey?
Hi.
I will make a motion to approve Resolution 71-2020, a resolution to authorize the Miami Township Administrator to enter into a contract with Motorola Solutions. Therefore, be it resolved, the Miami Township Board of Trustees hereby authorizes the township administrator to enter into a contract with Motorola Solutions for the purchase, installation, and training of Spelman Flex R software for the Miami Township Police Department with costs not to exceed $200,000. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion?
Mr. Morris?
Hi.
Mr. Culp?
No.
Mr. Posey?
Hi.
To approve Resolution 72-2020, a resolution of concurrence with the Dayton City Commission appointment to the Miami Township-Daten Joint Economic Development District. Therefore, be it resolved, the Miami Township Board of Trustees concurs with the Dayton City Commission's appointment-
with the Dayton City Commission's appointment of Mike Cross to the Miami Township Dayton Joint Economic Development District. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion?
Mr. Morse? Mr. Morse?
Aye.
Mr. Colb?
Aye.
Mr. Posey?
Aye.
My resolutions are a bit out of order. So what used to be 73 is now 78. And so does somebody else want to bring forward 73 and the rest? So I don't get them out of order.
I'll make a motion that we approve Resolution 073-2020, resolution to request the Montgomery County Auditor to certify the total current tax valuation in anticipation of a 3.65 mil renewal levy for the fire department. Therefore be it resolved, the Miami Township Board of Trustees in compliance with the Ohio Revised Code 5705.03B, request the Montgomery County Auditor to certify the current total tax valuation of the unincorporated portion of Miami Township within Montgomery County and the total revenue of five-year 3.65 mil renewal levy would generate for the fire department as provided for under ORC 5705.19I, if approved in the May 2021 primary election, to renew the existing 3.65 mil fire and EMS levy expiring on December 31, 2021.
I'll second. Any discussion?
Mr. Morse?
Aye.
Mr. Colb?
Aye.
Mr. Posey?
Aye.
I will make a motion to approve Resolution 74-2020. I believe it's a resolution to request the Montgomery County Auditor to certify the total current tax valuation in anticipation of a 3.65 mil replacement levy for the fire department. Therefore be it resolved, the Miami Township Board of Trustees in compliance with the Ohio Revised Code 5705.03B, request the Montgomery County Auditor to certify the current total tax valuation of the unincorporated portion of Miami Township within Montgomery County and the total revenue of a five-year 3.65 mil would generate for the fire department as provided under ORC 5705.19I, if approved in the May 2021 primary election to renew the existing 3.65 mil fire and EMS levy expiring December 3, 2021. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Discussion?
Mr. Morse?
Aye.
Mr. Colb?
Aye.
Mr. Posey?
Aye. I'll go ahead and move to approve Resolution 75-2020, a resolution to request the Montgomery County Auditor to certify the total current tax valuation in anticipation of a 4.00 mil replacement levy for the fire department. Therefore be it resolved, the Miami Township Board of Trustees in compliance with Ohio Revised Code Section 5705.03B, request the Montgomery County Auditor to certify the current total tax valuation of the unincorporated portion of Miami Township within Montgomery County and the total revenue a five-year 4.00 mil replacement levy would generate for the fire department as provided for under Ohio Revised Code Section 5705.19I, if approved in the May 2021 primary election to renew the existing 3.65 mil fire and EMS levy expiring on December 31, 2021.
I'll second.
Second.
Any discussion?
Mr. Morse?
Aye.
Mr. Colb?
Aye.
Mr. Posey?
Aye.
Move to approve Resolution 76-2020, a resolution to request the Montgomery County Auditor to certify the current total tax valuation in anticipation of a 4.25 mil replacement levy for the fire department. Therefore be it resolved, the Miami Township Board of Trustees in compliance with the Ohio Revised Code Section 5705.03B, request the Montgomery County Auditor to certify the current total tax valuation of the unincorporated portion of Miami Township within Montgomery County and the total revenue a five-year 4.25 mil replacement levy would generate for the fire department as provided for under Ohio Revised Code Section 5705.19I, if approved in the May 2021 primary election to renew the existing 3.65 mil fire and EMS levy expiring on December 31, 2021.
I'll second. Any discussion?
Mr. Morse?
Aye.
Mr. Colb?
Aye.
Mr. Posey?
Aye.
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 77-2020, a resolution to request the Montgomery County Auditor to certify the total current tax valuation in anticipation of a 4.50 mil replacement levy for the fire department. Therefore be it resolved, the Miami Township Board of Trustees in compliance with the Ohio Revised Code 5705.03B, request the Montgomery County Auditor to certify the current total tax valuation of the unincorporated portion of Miami Township with Montgomery County and the total revenue of a five-year 4.50 mil replacement levy would generate for the fire department as provided for under ORC 5705.19I, if approved in the May 2021 primary election to renew the existing 3.65 mil fire and EMS levy expiring December 31, 2021. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion?
Mr. Morse?
Aye.
Mr. Colb?
Aye.
Mr. Posey?
Aye.
So I will make a motion to approve the revised motion for Parks and Safety Improvement Investigation or Funding in 2021. I don't share the concerns that this obligates us to anything because we can't spend any money without passing a further motion in the future. I see this motion strictly as a request for the Administrator and the fiscal officer to come back and tell this board, is it possible for us to spend up to half a million dollars on parks improvement next year? And it designates or discusses that Miami View Park needs investment as well as does the low damp. So this emotion is attempting to do is to say, let's see if we've got funding to do two projects. And these are a couple of those examples. In my mind, it doesn't obligate us to spend that money on anything because a further motion would have to come through, so.
So I understand that. So I just want to comment quickly. I understand that, but I think the problem text that we're seeing is the sentence that says, "A portion of this funding shall be specifically budgeted." I mean, correct me, Terry, if I'm wrong, but.
That's my concern with this is that the motion may be to go see if there is funding, but the language used in the motion within earmark, the funding if found for those two projects without further discussion.
So I will amend the revised motion to strike the word "shall be", whatever Mr. Colb just shared. Shall be specifically allocated to, is that the language that's being debated?
Shall be specifically budgeted towards. And that's where I was, my encouragement earlier is if you cut those two sentences altogether, we can say the purpose of the exploration is to determine whether funding exists for these projects. And I'm perfectly willing to support that. But that's where I'm not willing to support an earmarked spending allocation if we find funds.
Okay, so.
My motion, but that's the concern.
Okay, so if you could, which and detail which the strike? Or Mr. Colb? Because I'm hearing neither of you are comfortable approving it as written. So if one of you wants to bring forward a revised.
I don't. The projects need to be referenced because they're described in the memo in which it's authorizing the motion. If we just cut out the portion that, like I said, the motion to allow the Township Administrator, along with the fiscal officer, to explore and determine the best way to fund up to $500,000 towards new park equipment purchases, parks capital projects, and proactive steps towards removal of the lowdown for the fiscal year 2021.
Period, end of motion.
Correct.
Okay, I will second that. Any further discussion?
Who made the motion? I'll second it.
I'll go ahead and say I made the motion.
Okay, okay, that's you. All right. Yeah, right now I have.
Yes, I have Mr. Posey motion with the revised language and Mr. Morse seconded the motion with the revised language. That's how correct everybody. Mr. Morse?
Aye.
Mr. Colb?
Aye.
Mr. Posey?
Aye.
Thank you, gentlemen. I will be super excited if we can find some money to invest in our parks and that this board can come back together and decide the best use of that money if we can find it. We are now moving into a public hearing. So I will make a motion to approve, or not approve, I will make a motion to open public hearing for zoning case number 444-20. Is there a second?
Yeah, I'll second.
Any discussion?
Mr. Morse?
Aye.
Mr. Colb?
Aye.
Mr. Posey?
Aye.
Zoning case number 444-20 is now open. The following will be the order in which the hearing will proceed. Staff will give a report. The applicant will give a present, be offered an opportunity to give a presentation. All proponents will give, be an opportunity to speak. All opponents will give them an opportunity to speak. A time limit of three minutes will be placed on each of the speakers. When coming forward, please give your name and address for the record. The board will close the public hearing prior to taking any action. Mr. Hinkleman, have the legal requirements of this hearing been met? And do you have a recommendation from the Miami Township Zoning Commission that you could please review at this time?
Thank you very much. For the record, they've already advertised. And we are discussing this evening, ZC 444-20, a final development plan for the public plan development. Can everyone see the PowerPoint? Yes, okay.
I can, and just for the record, can you? I think, I think maybe you should answer the question that the legal requirements were met and you have a recommendation.
Yes, for the record, the case was properly advertised. The legal requirement, but, and I will read into the record at the end of my report, the zoning commission recommendation. With that said.
Thank you, sir. Please proceed.
Thank you. With that said, the case before you is the final development plan for Lot 3. Lot 3 is within the public works plan development, which we have discussed over the last couple of months. This is a 22-acre plan development that is the south side of our community, off of Wood Road, next to our public works facility. These are a couple of photos of the lot in question, again, Lot 3. And as you can see here in the site plan, Lot 3 is a two-acre property right in the middle of the plan development. And what is being requested this evening is a final development plan, which includes a 9,534 square foot office and exercise facility. As you can see in the site plan, within your packets and in this PowerPoint, the site plan for that two acres includes not only that building, but also impervious surface, which includes 40 parking spaces as well as a substantial landscape plan. One of the requirements, if you will recall, of the development standards that were adopted by the board for this plan development were the addition of additional buffer on the south side of this property. So in the landscape plan, you will also see the addition of 12 evergreens as well as five deciduous trees that are adding to the already existing buffer on the south side of the site. With that said, the site also meets all the requirements for the number of trees, as well as the native tree species, parking lot coverage, and all the other frontage requirements.
Mr. Hinkleman, what is being shown in that picture? You just, if you could go back to above the green foliage at the south end, it looks like a clumping of something or other?
So the applicant has utilized their site plan.
Bottom left.
Yep, they've utilized the site plan for their landscape plan. And that is a drainage area on their site. So it is not a landscape area. It is just, there will be some riprap in that area likely.
Okay, thank you.
I would like to note as well, the applicant has modified their lighting plan to meet our lighting requirements. And you will see within your packets that they have provided elevations, which are before you here, which show the building, which is substantially made of metal. But they have gone to some lengths to add stone to the facades to make it come in line with some of the other buildings in the area. So as you can see in the bottom right, as well as here, the applicant's building is going to be a black building. So it is going to be a little darker than some of the other buildings around. But it is a very attractive building that meets the requirements of the standards that we put in place previously under the plan development. I did want to note that you'll see on the east side of the building, there are two large doors that face the public works facility that are able to be opened, which you can also see here. So they are not on the south side or on the west side. Both of those sides have no exits or doorways. All the doorways are on the north or east side of the facility. The south elevation is primarily just black metal. But there is a portion that has some split block because the applicant, for internal reasons, when they throw different heavy balls at a wall and it's made of metal, it doesn't do well. So they needed a portion of the wall to have a little more strength. So that is actually utilized for the interior. It will be painted black. And from a distance, you won't be able to tell the difference between the metal and the actual split block. With that said, the zoning commission recommended approval of ZC 444-20 based on the findings of the public hearing with no stipulations. If you have any questions of me, I'd be happy to answer them. Otherwise, I do believe there is a representative of the applicant here who certainly can speak to any questions that you would have of him.
Does anyone have any questions for Mr. Hinkleman? All right, hearing none. Mr. Muncie, would you like to share anything?
Good evening, everyone. My name is Matt Muncie. I live at 1061 Decker Drive in Miami'sburg, lifelong resident of the area and have a great deal of pride in it. I started our business, Renegade Warehouse, 10 years ago. Actually, exactly this time of year, 10 years ago. This was kind of our next step. And we're very thankful for Mr. Snyder and Mr. Hinkleman for working with us and their patience over the last couple of years and this has come together. I'm also thankful for the trustees for listening and hearing our proposal. We have done sports performance training for junior high, high school, college athletes, functional fitness for adult clients, along with Olympic weightlifting. And in this new facility, we plan to add physical therapy as well. And that will really do wonders. And we really think it'll legitimize our business and give us a great deal to build upon on the premium side of business. So we're really excited about the possibility. I'm, of course, here to answer any questions at all in regards to what we have planned. We are committed to being a great asset to Miami Township. You know, doing right by everybody involved on this and being a great neighbor back there in that area. So again, I just want to thank everybody on the call tonight. And I'm here to answer any questions.
Thank you, sir. Any questions for Mr. Muncie? All right, hearing none, we will now hear from. All right. Hearing none. We will now hear from any proponents who wish to come forward. Anybody in favor of this plan that would like to be put on the record? Please raise your hand or come forward.
I see none.
Seeing none. Anyone opposed to the plan who would like to make comments for the record? Please come forward.
I see none.
All right. I will now close the public hearing portion of this meeting. And I will make a motion to close the public hearing for zoning case number four 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 dash two zero. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion?
Mr. Morse.
Hi.
Mr. Colt.
Hi.
Mr. Posey.
Hi.
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution seventy-eight dash twenty twenty. A resolution to adopt a final development plan for public, for the Public Works PD lot three under zoning case four 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 dash two zero. Therefore be it resolved, the Miami Township Board of Trustees approves the final development plan under zoning case four 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 dash two adopts the zoning commission recommendation. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion?
Mr. Morse.
Hi.
Mr. Colt.
Hi.
Mr. Posey.
Hi.
Do any of the trustees have any requests for comment for department heads or do any of the department heads have any comments to bring forward? I would like to address Mr. Snyder. Chris, it's the end of boating season, but I got many calls from residents over the summer regarding our rules on the parking of boats in driveways. Essentially, we do not allow such a thing except for a forty-eight hour time period, if I'm thinking correctly. I thought this was a good idea of a resident and I would like you to see what it would take and if it would be possible to bring before the board some sort of temporary permit process where a resident could come in, apply for a clearly visible temporary permit that could perhaps perhaps be hung on the boat or on the trailer so that when our zoning person drives by, they see that they have a five-day window to keep the boat in other than forty-eight hours. A lot of our residents like to pick up their boat on Wednesday or Thursday so they can have it over the weekend. So the forty-eight hours expires. And then their only recourse is to park the boat in the street, which is not nearly as safe as leaving it in the driveway. So I just think it's not unreasonable to, to perhaps modify and allow for a permitting process. So perhaps if you could look into that and bring back some information?
We can certainly look into it and bring back memo and some information to the board and see how you would all like to proceed. So.
Thank you for that. And Mr. McCord, any progress or thoughts on when we may see year-to-date versus prior year-to-date reporting in your presentations to us?
That was in the reading material for this meeting was the initial, it's still a manual process, but there are, it's included in the budget year-to-date package at the end and it's broken down by fund. So there's a revenue sheet and an expense sheet for each of the funds. And right now that's generated by SSI and then we drop it into Excel and still have to kind of reduce it down. So you don't end up with about a hundred pages of output. So I would be appreciative of any feedback on the presentation or the level of detail or anything you'd like to see changed on that. Like I said, it still takes us a while to get it done. So we, we, we rushed it to get it done this time. It's just kind of a prototype. And that's on my, it's not where I want it to be yet, but it's, it's getting there. And it's going to serve as the prototype for when we flip to the new software next year.
So the, just refresh my memory on the timeline for the new software?
We are in the queue. We are now in the queue. We should be looking somewhere. They're saying between second, second quarter. I'm hoping to get my hands on it this quarter to start trying to break it.
Excellent.
What we're going to try to do for the next six months and we should be there, there's some time, you know, mid next year, we should be able to flip completely.
Well, I just want to appreciate your efforts in that, moving the township on to the Ohio checkbook and transparency being available and the more crisper reports that this board can, can get can only make us better in our transparency and fiscal responsibility. So thank you, Clay. Elected officials comments. Mr. Newell, do you have anything?
I have none.
Mr. Colt.
I have none.
Mr. Posey.
I have none.
I would just like to thank the other trustees for working with me on the revised motion for parks and safety funding. And I look forward to further discussions should those funds be found available for our potential use and investment in the community. There are no work sessions. There are no executive sessions. I will make a motion to adjourn this meeting at six fifty-seven. Thank you all. Have a great evening.